All right. Well, good evening. We'd like to welcome everybody to this special meeting of the Lakota Board of Education. Do I, oh, Ms. Logan, roll call, please.
This is Casper here. Mrs. O'Connor here. Mr. Parnell.
Here.
Mrs. Schaefer here. Mr. Level.
Here. Thank you for that. And just to our community that is viewing, we are in person. However, Mrs. O'Connor, Mr. Parnell are with us virtually and obviously as a special meeting and how it pops up, we have to work around people's schedules. So I appreciate the board and everybody being flexible. It's Mr. Parnell's birthday. Sorry to shout that out, but on the call. And so we just appreciate everybody's flexibility on behalf of the board to be able to make this meeting occur and obviously administration as well. Second item is to approve the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I think I heard Linda.
Okay. So Connor moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, roll call, please. Mrs.
Mrs. O'Connor. Yes. This is Casper. Yes. Mr. Parnell.
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer. Yes. Mr. Level.
Yes. All right. We had a change in the agenda, just to let everybody know, the public comment section is actually going to be next. So if for some reason you saw an older agenda, we are going to do public comment prior to what would be Section 3 to reopening plans. And so prior to public comment, though, I just wanted to articulate a few things to our community. Just a reminder that this public comment section is on the superintendent's recommendation of Plan A, K to 12, all in, five days a week for reopening the Lakota Local School District. That is going to be the recommendation that we discussed post-public comment. Also a reminder that you need to state your name, you need to state your address, and there is a three-minute limit to comments. If you sent public comment in prior to 4:00 PM today, we also have a timer for that. So some of them are quite lengthy. We appreciate our community emailing us and sending that feedback, but we will stop reading after three minutes. Our public comment section is 45 total minutes and prior to, or like we've done in the past, we will be listening to all the statements, the comments and questions. And Mrs. Casper, next to me here, she's got her timer set for 45 minutes, but she's going to be writing down all the questions. I will fully admit, I do way better listening and not writing at the same time. So that's my learning styles. We'll throw that out there. And so what we'll do is after we hear your comments or your questions, we'll then, after that 45 minutes, if it takes that long or however long it will be, we'll then go through and answer each question.
One per person.
Oh, yes. And we, per board policy, we allow one question or comment per person. All right. So to get us started, we have eight emails that were submitted. So Mrs. Fuller, our communications director, will be reading those.
Good afternoon. The first comment is from Pratima Garg, 4265 North Shore Drive, Westchester, Ohio, 45069. I have two children in Lakota schools. My daughter, Shekha, will be a senior, and my son is going to be seventh grade at Plains Junior High. It is very important to me and my family that my kids have in-person classes. Shekha needs at least some in-person instruction in order to be prepared for college next year. She is taking AB Calculus, AP Physics, AP Spanish, AP Literature, and Digital Engineering. All of those subjects, especially math, physics, and engineering, most definitely need in-person lessons with a teacher in class. Students learn from each other's questions in class. Students gain a ton from in-person collaboration. The in-person classes motivate my kids to do their best. Online schooling did not work for them. My son, me here, definitely needs in-person schooling. He can't teach himself the fundamentals that are the foundation for his learning going forward. I am not able to teach my kids the way a teacher would. He will be taking Advanced Math 7, Advanced Science 7, along with Engineering and Advanced Language Arts and Advanced Social Studies. He is also taking PE to get a chance to play with friends at school. Kids gain a ton from in-person classes. Lack of in-person school leads to depression within our younger community and other issues such as loneliness, drugs, drug abuse, et cetera. School is a great outlet for kids to feel a part of the bigger family and community. In-person teacher-student interaction is extremely important. With both my kids being reserved by nature, online education is the absolute worst option for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Really quick, I got a notification that we hit our 500-person max on Zoom. Just to reassure our community, is this going to be, this is being recorded and will be sent out?
Absolutely. It is being recorded, and the link to the recording will be put up as soon as possible as that happens. But yes, it is being recorded, so anyone can watch it after.
All right. Thank you.
Our second comment is from Tracy Holsher, 4377 Yacht Haven Way, Westchester, Ohio, 45069. As you review and approve reopening plans, I would like to reiterate just how important it is that our children get back into the classroom, back to in-classroom instruction as soon as possible. I have heard many comments posted as to how elementary children need to be, to return due to childcare issues, but that high school kids can take care of themselves at home and therefore supposedly better candidates for the 100% online school. I have two high school children in Lakota, and I emphatically disagree with those comments. Our high school children are in all honors classes and have worked very hard to get to this point and be successful in college. After doing online school from March until the end of the year, they both can tell you that they pretty much did not learn anything. These are two kids that test high and standardized testing and get, and get As in honors classes. If they had trouble learning in online school, how do you think it is going to affect other kids that struggle a bit more? The fact is that sitting in your bedroom on a computer all day, reading your assignments, and trying to figure things out on your own, for the most part, is not education. At a time when teenagers are trying to prepare for college, in-person classroom instruction is vital. Making teachers available via Zoom or email does not make up for the lack of in-person instruction. There are things that happen in the classroom that you cannot reproduce online or through video chat, no matter how hard you try. For example, you can try and make the point that you will make sure teachers are available to answer questions, et cetera, but many times, they do not know all the questions they need to ask. And being in a classroom environment where they can hear each other's questions and the teacher's answers is an important process of learning. Even if you could reproduce those questions via Zoom, kids are still very disconnected, sitting in their rooms alone, and do not necessarily hear or retain most of the information. I also understand the importance of offering online school to those that are not comfortable with returning or immune compromised. Lakota has offered that, and therefore no child is forced to return if they are not comfortable or do not feel safe. So why would we take away giving the healthy kids an option as well as to return if they feel safe and are willing to meet the mask requirement? Studies have shown that masks absolutely reduce the spread of COVID, so children that are willing to wear the mask and socially distance should be allowed to return to the classroom. The CDC, the authority leading our nation on how to deal with the pandemic, has recently issued guidelines on how important it is that children return to school in the fall. This is a quote directly from cdc.gov website on reopening schools. The harms attributed to closed schools on the social, emotional, and behavioral health, economic well-being, and academic achievement of children.
Okay, we've hit our three-minute, oh, we have not. 30 seconds, sorry.
In both the short and long term are well-known and significant. Knowing that going 100% online for school should be an absolute last resort. Back in March, we had no other choice. We did not know what we were dealing with, and we did not know how to treat it. And we did not know how to really reduce the spread. We know a lot more now. Our local hospitals are not close to being at capacity, and we now have a mask mandate.
All right, we've hit our three-minute limit. Thank you. We can move on to the next comment.
Mackenzie Watson Boyd, 7064 West Hamilton Place Drive, Apartment 1213, Liberty Township, Ohio, 45069. Good evening. My parents and I decided to do virtual learning for the beginning of the school year. They feel safer with me being at home. I have moderate to severe asthma, which flares every few months or so. If I contracted COVID, my respiratory system would go haywire. My younger sister, who is three, has sickle cell disease, which makes her immune system more vulnerable to infection. She definitely can't get COVID because that would mean immediate hospitalization. This decision was made months before COVID cases started to accelerate at an unprecedented level. However, our decision to choose virtual learning affects my ability to participate in extracurricular activities such as choir. According to the official listing of courses for the Lakota East High School, choir is not offered as an online course. The only way to take choir is by attending school in person. I've taken choir since freshman year and wanted to take it all the way through high school. It's hard to fathom the reality of not having choir in my life, even if it is only for one semester of my junior year. What precautions will be taken in concurrence with CDC guidelines for students that are returning to school who aren't only in choir but in any performing arts class? How will six feet apart and mask requirements be maintained while singing or playing an instrument? If these requirements are waived for the duration of a performing arts class, students are put at risk of contracting COVID simply from the exchange of the same air to breathe. In regards to online courses, are there any exceptions that can be made for choir to be offered online? I just want to be a voice for those who have chosen to do virtual learning like me and desire to participate in performing arts. The next comment is from Margaret Lynn Martin, 6840 Woodland View Drive, Liberty Township, Ohio, 45044. I want to start by expressing my appreciation for how hard this decision is on all of you. The topic on school reopening is one that involves lots of emotion for many parents, students, teachers, and staff. So I want to thank you for listening and providing opportunities for somebody to express their concerns. I don't envy the decision you need to make today. As a teacher in this district, as well as a mother of kids in this district, I have my own strong opinions on reopening. I'm sure there are those that agree and those that disagree. In the end, you will find strong voices on all sides. Therefore, I request that you step away from those voices for a minute to consider two things while contemplating our reopening. One, can we realistically put the safety guidelines, including social distancing, in action in all of our schools at all of the educational grade levels? We all know that in-person is always the best way to build the important relationships of our school values. However, we also have quality teachers in our district, who I know will work with parents, support students, and provide amazing quality education, no matter how we go back. Therefore, risk and safety must be the question at hand. Is it truly safe? Two, what option will really give us the most in-person classroom time? Will starting in-person guarantee, guarantee us in-person time in case the choice is taken away from us later? Or will a slower start, a softer reopening, give us more chances to give back, I'm sorry, to get back into the classroom and spend more time with the students in the long run? Please consider these as you make your decision today. Thank you for your time. The next one is from Christine Schnurr, 5009 Samantha Court, Liberty Township, Ohio, 45011. I understand that today's board meeting is to determine if the kids will go back to school as was laid out in plans earlier this summer, or go remote, which was listed as option C, and stated it would be used if schools were closed in the spring, i.e. as ordered by the governor. General rumors are that three out of the five board members don't want the kids to return to school and likely where it's going to be remote. I am passionately opposed to the kids being forced into remote learning and want to share my views. School is a basic right and is required for kids. I don't understand how going to school can be considered optional. The online learning does not work well for most kids. My senior is supposed to take AP Anatomy this year. How in the world is she supposed to teach herself anatomy? This is a class she needs for the program she plans to attend in college and will put her at a major disadvantage. Likewise, my freshman is supposed to take algebra. She does not excel at math and needs the help of her teachers to understand the concepts. I have not taken algebra in 25 years. Certainly, I am not a good substitute to teach her algebra. Mental health is a huge issue. Treatment of depression and anxiety in teens has skyrocketed. My teen is in counseling and taking medication for anxiety, as I know a lot of other kids are. The isolation and lack of structure and routine makes things, makes us so much worse. With nowhere to go and nothing to do, no interaction with their peers, kids are totally isolated. My husband and I both work and have to go to work every day. In this situation, the kids are left at home on their own. Not everyone can work from home. Jobs can't be done from home, so don't think everyone is working from home anyway and can watch their kids. That leaves children with no supervision every day. I have no idea what I will do if the kids go remote. My daughter's depression has been improving some in the last month as she is working her summer job, but once that goes away and she is back at home, I expect her depression to worsen, especially once the weather gets cold and going outside won't be an option. Suicide hotline usage has skyrocketed. Mental health, inpatient service, domestic violence have all gone up as a part of, as a result of isolation. Think two of the children with limited incomes living in apartments or trailer homes with many family members. This is not a good situation for them either. I have heard that a big reason for remote learning is for fear of lawsuits filed against the school. First, I understand there is legislation in the work that will limit the liability for coronavirus. Second, have the kids who choose to come to school sign waivers? Anyone who really does not want their kids at school already has the option to go remote. Lastly, if the school forces remote learning when the governor does not require it, I fully expect lawsuits will be filed. We pay a lot of taxes for our schools, and to be forced into such drastic measures is wrong, especially so last minute when finding other options is not going to be easy. The next one is from Laura Sanders, 5551 Slade Court, Liberty Township. I do not know. To full-scale opening of our schools during the midst of a pandemic. Yes, Butler County is certainly better off than what the country's southern population is dealing with. However, the virus is still lurking in our own community, waiting patiently for the very people. Us are aware that children are not as susceptible to becoming severely ill from the coronavirus as adults. However, an alarming new study published just yesterday. I'll emphasize that the findings at least indicate that children can be infected. And those who harbor a lot of virus may spread it to others in their households or to teachers and other school staff members when schools reopen, end quote. Additionally, a comprehensive interactive map posted just this morning. It's on the map. Butler County should expect that one to four people who walk into a building of 500 will already be infected, and a building of 1,000. It does not bode well for our chances of success once the virus begins to spread exponentially. According to the Butler County General Health District's latest epidemiology report issued yesterday, the code is residents, that incidence rate is not an acceptable number to use as an impetus for opening our buildings. We should be sitting at 75 or less per 100,000. We are far from that, and I don't see any room for improvement in that category, as Ohio just broke another record yesterday with over 1,700 new cases. With all that being said, the Lakota School District is one of the more fortunate ones in the count, in the country when it comes to the adequacy of funding. There are numerous public schools trying to function on shoestring budget.
Pardon us, we had to switch out a microphone.
Sorry, technical difficulties. Let's see. We on there, we can have sufficient funds for the most
Sound fine.
Should be using that benefit to our advantage by focusing on creating a more robust online learning program these last few weeks rather than spending any more time worrying about the safety and security of our students and staff members. Why take, why take the risk when we all know that prevention is better than the cure? Lastly, what are the parents, guardians, and other caretakers going to do now that the virtual option is no longer available, but they still don't want their children inside school buildings? The next one is from Jeff and Tracy.
Excuse me, this is Linda. Having a little bit of trouble with the audio.
I know you've had to deal with incredible stress this year. We are praying for wisdom for you and the school board. It sounds as if the Lakota School Board is considering a shutdown of the school and consequently fall athletics. I have two questions. First, why shut down this high school sports? According to the COVID dashboard, only 0.1% of Ohio's under-19 age population have COVID, 3,800 active cases between July 31, 2020 compared to 2.6 million Ohio residents under 19. What do these numbers suggest that we should punish student athletes? Are we going to keep doing this? When the next pandemic occurs, it will be impossible to achieve 0%. So what number do we need to achieve to have high school sports? Second, the citizens, students, and student athletic, I'm sorry, student athletes impacted by these decisions have no voice in the matter. What is the school board, OHSAA, Governor Dewine, and the local health departments doing to measure the mental, social, and physical impact on student athletes? What will you do to stand up for students and student athletes at the board meeting today?
Last one?
This is the last one that I got.
Then I have one more.
Okay. This last one is from Rachel Kavanaugh, 7922 Wise Avenue, Westchester, Ohio, 45069. I'm strongly urging the board to move Lakota to a hybrid or remote-only model for at least the fall semester. For months, we as a country have worried and suffered over the effects of keeping kids home from school, the effects on parents' ability to work, on the economy in general, on children's social and emotional development. All of these are real concerns. All of these are valid. Families are struggling to balance working full-time, parenting full-time, and teaching full-time, all in the midst of a frightening pandemic that we have very little ability to predict or control. We all wish so, so hard that we could go back to normal. The normal is not an option. Normal is not available, and pretending that it is will only end up killing people. All of these remote learning effects that we've agonized over the economy, kids' academic progress can be recovered from later on. Economies rebound, and there are things that we did, that we do now, sorry, things that we can do now and in the future to lessen the harm done to children and families, such as small family bubbles for studying and planning. What can't be recovered from is the completely avoidable loss of life caused by putting dozens of kids in a closed classroom for 35 hours a week, expecting them to perfectly follow sanitary guidelines that many adults fail at, and then going home to their families. We've been incredibly fortunate that children could mostly have spared the high death rate of coronavirus, but that doesn't mean that they can't spread it. According to a study from the CDC's Emerging Infectious Disease Journal, schoolchildren between the ages of 10 and 19 are far more likely to transmit the virus than even adults are. What will the emotional and psychological effects on our children be when they give us the virus, give the virus to their families? When they have to watch a parent go to the hospital and not even be able to visit them? When they have to grieve alone without even the comfort of their friends or extended family because they have not been quarantined too? I've seen the stress and heartbreak that months of isolation have put on my own young children, have put my own young children under. I can't imagine how much worse that trauma would be if they were, if they were to be the ones to infect a classmate or a teacher and that person were to die. How does a seven-year-old handle being an instrument of death? Please make the compassionate choice, the choice based on what the infectious disease experts are telling you. You can use the resources of the district in other ways to make hybrid or remote learning both safe and successful. We've already lost over 150,000 Americans. Please help us save those who still can.
The last one we have before our four o'clock time limit, we, and we do, we have this posted, if they come in after 4:00 PM, which we might bid some after 4:00 PM, those will be read into the record at the next board meeting. And also just want to let you know that, you know, the board does receive copies of all of these emails, so they will get all the information. From Kathy Darnall, or Darnell, I would feel more comfortable if the Lakota School District would return to school on a hybrid schedule like Fairfield City Schools and Hamilton City Schools have chosen to do so. One of many concerns is the lack of social distancing on the school buses, which the last update has allowed 48 students on a bus. This is unsafe for the students as well as the bus drivers. Please do the right thing and keep safety of our students and staff the number one priority. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Mr. Zink, do we have anybody raising their hand? And just as a reminder, please don't type comments in the chat. We will not be reading those on Zoom. What we ask is that you digitally or raise your hand to let us know that you have a comment.
Brad, this is Linda. You might want to explain that to do that, they need to go into the chat room and hit the raise the hand button.
Can you please? Okay, Mark?
Hello? Hello?
Everyone? All right, give us one second, please. I'm gonna hit pause there, tell you whether they work out.
I can hear the board now, but I don't, don't know if you can hear me.
I can hear you.
I can hear you as well, Mark.
Okay, should I start?
I think they're still doing something. Brad will let you know.
Hi, Linda, could you please say something?
Hello?
It is coming out these speakers.
They're here.
I can't hear Todd and Linda. Okay, can you have them try now? Hello?
Todd or Linda, could you speak?
Linda here.
I can also hear Mark Havercoast, so if you guys can't, then a problem.
Let's try this, try this again. Mark, are you there? Hey, Mark?
Hello?
Oh, we can hear you. Fantastic. State your name and your address, please.
Mark Havercost, 7356 Weathersfield Drive in Westchester. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone at the meeting today for providing probably the best example of why remote learning is just not up to the task and would be a disaster if that were the chosen path. But my reason for reaching out to the board today is, in the last week, I've spoken with three teachers in three other school districts, and I will state that these teachers were not in the Lakota district. But in these districts, it's being strongly suggested that if they do open for live in-class, that the teachers are prepared to en masse call in sick. And that was kind of echoed by several of the other teachers And that was kind of echoed by several of the other teachers' unions this week, listed in the Columbus Dispatch. The American Federation of Teachers two days ago came out and said that teachers' unions ought to threaten a safety strike. I would ask this board to consider Plan D, which would be, what are you gonna do when we do open full or to some degree a full, and half of the teachers don't show up? This would definitely be a job action, and the district's attorney needs to be put on notice that something needs to be done should that happen, where people who are being paid righteous salaries are not showing up for work. One of the reasons why this has come about was several weeks ago, Dewine in Houston, from their weekly or daily updates, made a big deal of this money available from the CARES Act, where they were stating how that money would go to the schools to enable reopening. The problem with what path they've chosen was they invited every special interest to the table, from OSBA to ASBO to NEA, all clamoring for that money. And one of the things that came out of that meeting is the teachers are looking for hazard pay. This isn't, this has nothing to do with the safety of our children, the safety of our teachers. It has to do with them wanting extra pay, like some other companies have offered their employees. So I'm just asking this board to be aware that you might be dealing with a labor issue, and that needs to be dealt with, because the citizens of Liberty Township in Westchester are not going to tolerate that when all of us have to go to work every day, whether we like it or not. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments.
Valerie Hobbs.
Okay, Valerie.
Yes, can you hear me?
We sure can. If you wouldn't mind just speaking up just a little bit so we can hear you.
Okay, is it better now?
That's, that's great. Thank you.
Perfect. My name is Valerie Hobbs. I live at 9876 Creekstone Lane in Westchester. I am nervous to return to five days a week, for my children to return to school five days a week. My question is, are my children going to be safe? I asked at a board meeting about a month ago for specific guidelines on how you will keep my children safe. I've yet to see those written guidelines and am very disappointed that I have not seen them. While I know you're working hard, I put my faith in Matt Miller and the board to provide this information, and I did not sign up for VLO for my children. As I said, I was looking for written guidelines that would make the district be held accountable, not a video or just a simple list. I am now second-guessing my decision and am looking into other options outside of Lakota. I am concerned that we cannot maintain social distancing, that students will not wear their masks, that cleaning protocols will not be maintained, that our teachers, staff, and staff are being placed in an unsafe environment. I am concerned about the cafeteria, about the clinic, and our overall mental and physical health of our children. I do not think that the ECS and elementary buildings are equipped to have students three feet apart in the classroom. Are our buildings equipped to have children eat safely in the cafe? And what are the guidelines? I've heard three feet. I've heard six feet. I personally would like more time for the schools to get all their ducks in a row. I would like to, personally, I would like to see a virtual walkthrough of each of my kids' schools to ensure they will be safe. Since I am not able to attend an open house, how can I, as a parent, ensure that the school is safe? I do not envy your decision here, but as a proud Westchester resident for almost 20 years, I urge you to put the safety of the children, teachers, and staff first. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Hey, Kelly.
Hello, can you hear me?
We sure can.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Go for it.
Okay, thanks for letting me speak. My name is Kelly Nolte. I live at 6215 Sugar Tree Court, Liberty Township, Ohio, 45011. I'm a proud Lakota graduate of 1997. My son graduated last year, and I have two kids still in the Lakota district. That being said, I'm a cardiovascular advanced practice nurse that actually worked in COVID units in the actual hospital. I have firsthand experience. My son, that was in a dorm, had COVID. I think you guys are doing the most admirable thing by giving the virtual learning option to parents to send their kids back, yet still having in-class school. My kids will attend in-class school. My, I am a true supporter of Lakota and have been my entire life. I am thrilled that my kids are going to be able to go back to school, and if they don't, they will, I will go to a private school, and that will be probably forevermore, because I am actually a master-trained person, and I am adjunct faculty at Miami University, and still am unable to fully teach my children the way they need to be taught. That's all I have, and thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments. Hey, Jenny Haynes.
Hi, can you hear me?
We sure can.
Sorry, this is actually Emily Haynes using a different account, so sorry about that.
No problem.
I live at 6768 Apache Way in Westchester. So my, my parents and my older brother are all staff at Lakota local schools, and I am an alum of Lakota East High School. I work in the public health field, and I'm very concerned for the safety of my family and my community if the reopening of school is not done in the absolute safest way possible. It says on your website that likely only the person who tests positive for COVID will have to quarantine. I don't think this is an adequate response. The use of masks is effective, but it does not replace social distancing as a preventive action. A student in class with either a classmate or a teacher who has tested positive has still been in contact with a positive case. The CDC says that contact is defined as a person who has been within a physical distance of three to six feet for more than 15 minutes, or direct physical contact with a probable or confirmed case. It will be very difficult to enforce strict physical distancing and mask-wearing, especially in your K through six grade levels. Additionally, the use of masks alone is insufficient to provide an adequate level of protection, especially for groups of people in an enclosed space for a prolonged period of time, which is how it will be with our students at school. So how do you justify this policy in light of this guidance from the CDC and the World Health Organization? How will you keep your students and staff safe if you are not requiring quarantine for people who have been in contact with someone who tested positive? Additionally, I just have one more question in regards to other school districts in our county. Middletown has decided to have remote learning, and others are preparing hybrid learning. They have postponed sports and extracurricular activities. Have you discussed reopening plans with other school districts in our county on how they came to these decisions and what makes us different? Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much for your comment. Okay, Ian Murray.
Good afternoon, Ian Murray, 4755 Winter Park Drive, Liberty Township, Ohio, 45011. Just want to start by saying I appreciate the difficult position that both Mr. Miller and the entire board are in, having to sit down and make this decision, especially when you're being asked to engineer risk out of something where risk exists in our lives every day, when we walk out the door of our house. According to the CDC numbers, I know people are throwing around a lot of numbers, but according to CDC, from February 1st to July 11th, three times as many children in the zero to 14 age demographic died from the flu, 101 kids compared to COVID-19, 31 kids. There were a total of 11,158 reported fatalities from all causes in that age range, which means that the COVID fatalities make up a very, very, very small percentage, 0.0278% of all fatalities. And if you look at the 15 to 24-year-old demographic, 267 died from pneumonia compared to only 157 from COVID-19 in that same age bracket. You know, my student wants to go and be in class with her peers this fall. That's why we chose not to have the virtual learning option. I commend Lakota for creating the virtual learning option for those families that felt it would be safer for their students to be at home. That's great. It's personal choice. I applaud the option. But we are very adamant about getting our kid back in the classroom. Because there's risks that we face every day, the, the numbers are showing that there's not a significant risk. The evidence doesn't exist to support the theory that children pose a threat to educational professionals in a school or classroom setting. The American Academy of Pediatrics, the CDC, Governor Dewine have all said that kids should be back in school this fall, because it's worse for them to be out of school than in school. If we go to a hybrid learning model, it causes all kinds of issues then for working parents. The state has reopened all daycare centers to full capacity. How is a daycare then different than a school? If we're allowed to send our kids back to daycare at full capacity, why are we not allowed to send our kids back to school to get an education? As well, the Ohio High School Athletic Association today came out and announced that all fall sports can resume. So there's so many things that are happening in our state and our world that are pushing to get kids butts in seats back in school. I appreciate all that you guys are doing to manage risk, but I understand that sending my kids out into the world every day is full of risk, and would ask that you take that into consideration when making the decision to do five-day in-person learning versus a remote option. Those parents who want that or families that want that, have that option with the...
We've hit the three-minute. Mr. Murray, we thank you for your comment. Okay, Shanda is next. Okay, Antoinette, you're up. Okay, Antoinette.
Can you hear me now?
We sure can.
Hi. I want to tell you guys, thank you for all the hard work you guys have done to come up with viable options.
Now, you need to name and your address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Antoinette Brockup, 6313 Foxwood Court, Liberty Township, 45044.
Thank you so much.
So, thanks for your hard work. I have a few points to make. We have five kids in the district. We decided to do a risk-benefit analysis for each one of them. We're currently planning for three of them to attend VLO, two of them in school because of the needs for labs, et cetera. Personally, I prefer a hybrid option, because I think it's good for them to do the labs in person, but I would prefer for the class sizes to be smaller. In terms of statistics about deaths, I don't think those numbers reflect what would happen within school, because most of these kids were quarantined and then at home with limited exposure to other people. Not the same as being in a building with hundreds of other people riding the bus, et cetera. I'm concerned about compliance with masks with children, because kids are kids, and I see adults having a hard time wearing masks. And I also don't know if daycares and schools can be accurately compared, because daycares have at most 100 children and not hundreds or thousands of kids, so. That is my input. I appreciate your time and wish you all the best with your decision-making.
Thank you so much for your comment. We appreciate it. That it? Okay, all right, well, we'll bring our public comments section to a close, seeing no other public comments. That moves us on to the next item on our agenda, which is the reopening plans and recommendations from that. Oh, we're supposed to respond.
I didn't just cramp my finger for nothing.
It's because it's not a Monday. I think I'm like, I apologize, everybody, because I didn't respond to a single comment. But you know what? I am going to pass this to Ms. Casper, because she was diligently writing everything down. I've learned my lessons from past meetings, so, Ms. Casper, I'll let you kind of go through them, or Mr. Miller, however you want to. Sorry about that.
I mean, there were, there were a lot of comments.
There was a lot of comments. The first, the first email really was a comment. They would like in-person classes online does not work for their son or daughter. Tracy was the second comment. She also wants her kids in class and feels that high school kids need to be in class as well as case-in.
I think, because we all heard the comments, I think we just go straight to the questions, if that's okay.
Okay. Mackenzie wants to know about choir in virtual and choir in person. And we have not made that decision yet, correct?
Yeah, I have that one down, and she, I believe, was a virtual learning option student. If there's something we can do, we would, but it's probably not likely in a virtual learning option to do choir. I can check that out.
She, so are we doing choir in person?
Yes, yes.
And her question was, and her question is, are we keeping those children safe?
Yes.
Kelly, this is Linda.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but I think part of the question from that, from that participant was whether or not we were offering choir as an online class.
Yes, he just said we were not.
We were not?
Yes, Matt just said that we were not.
He said.
All right, thank you.
Number four is concerned if we can actually put safety plans in place for our kids.
Yes, and we've been working with the health department on that several times a week.
Just another comment about kids being in class and mental health, and the rumor that three out of five of us are going to vote to not send kids back. You should be careful what you read on Facebook. Just saying. Not a question there, not a question there. Sports in person. Rachel had a question. She'd like to mature hybrid. Question, question. Mr. Havercoast wants to know, we have a plan of teachers calling mass sickness?
I know that it's been a concern in some other districts. We have not had that since at Lakota. But we have legal counsel that'll help us walk through that if need be.
As well as substitute teachers do. Mrs. Hobbs is wondering where the guidelines are for how we will keep our child safe.
So on the, there's a PDF from, that we presented at the June 29th board meeting, specifically tied to Plan A, where we list out what those safety precautions are. So physical distancing guidelines called with six feet separation when possible, and at least three feet in classrooms, and that was one of the decisions we made early on about needing masks. And I think we're probably the first one in the county, if not one of the first school districts in the state, that made mask mandatory because of that, and because of our contact with the health department, but also the infectious disease expert at UC Health. We're also following the block schedule with grades seven through 12, and that's something to limit student movement. We talked about devices too, and take-home devices. Our cafeterias will be at 50% capacity, again, following the guidance of the experts. The busing issue, I think that had come up a couple times. We have been approved for two in a seat as long as everybody's masked up, and we are making that a requirement. The additional cleaning and personal protective equipment is implemented in accordance with CDC, Ohio Butler County COVID-19 guidelines, including the health checks that we're asking parents to help us with, the hand sanitizers at our entries, and the cleaning supplies at every classroom. Again, this is, I'm just rereading this from the presentation on June 29th, I believe. Also, all staff is required for face coverings. We'll have mask breaks, and we can move to a different option if need be, or if the governor takes us there as well. We also have a very robust, for lack of a better term, and not the right word, FAQ on our website about reopening, so I would encourage our public to take a look at that. There's a Back to School 2020, 2021, frequently asked questions with a lot of answers and a lot of information there for everybody. I know I'm probably going over what you've asked me, but I think it covers some of the other questions as well. There's also a share-out from our communications team via PGR, social media, and a weekly wrap-up email that'll be going to parents, recapping information that we have shared throughout each week. So we'll talk about physical distancing, the setups for classroom, procedures for reporting positive cases. And again, those are based on guidelines. And if there's a question about quarantine, we don't decide to quarantine. The health department decides to quarantine, and they take each person through a matrix of high, medium, and low, as whether they're a high-risk, medium-risk, or low-risk. And very early on, again, that was tied to... And uh, very early on, again, that was tied to uh, the mask uh, guidance that we received from the infectious disease control expert and from the Butler County Health Department. So we'll take our cues from them. But I just wanted to mention that.
So that was part of Emily's question about she didn't believe that quarantine just the person was enough. And she also asked the question that have we consulted with other school districts?
We, we have. We talked to a lot of, a lot of school districts, uh, not just in this region or across Ohio, but across the country and what they're doing. We are not the only school district um, in Butler County that will be going back. There are several others. There are several others in the GMC that are going back. And um, we do communicate and talk about uh, what everyone's different plans are. And again, there is no um, correct path in any of this. There is uh, a risk no matter what option we go through.
And then I think that Ian Murray just had a comment and Annette had a comment and some concerns with masks and social distancing.
Virtual.
And, oh, yes.
Yeah, I think we can have our principals um, take a look at doing that, putting something out for our parents. I think that would be an easy thing to do. And I, I know I talked to them the last time I was with them about doing that, so hopefully get those out maybe next week. That's your little reminder.
Linda or Todd, is there anything that you picked up that wasn't answered?
Uh, no, except uh, I did have a community member call me right, oh, I guess it was yesterday. Regarding marching band. And I believe she sent an email and Matt may have responded. But explain why kids are not allowed to play instruments outside.
So that, that's a great question. So the health department just came out with brand-new guidelines yesterday for band and for singing um, and for choir. And it's um, opening things up for our kids. There are safety precautions and guidelines pertaining to those different extracurriculars or co-curriculars. And so Todd, I already forwarded those yesterday to both band director and our principals, our high school principals, so um, things are better now. Not where we want them yet, but they are allowed to play instruments. There are just a lot of spacing and distancing and guidelines that they're going to follow.
Okay, great, thanks.
While we're addressing that question, would you also talk about theater for a moment, Matt?
Yeah, I, I have to check on theater a little bit more because, I mean, obviously there's some singing involved there, but um, they're requesting them to go outside for that. I'm not sure that's really good, unless it's theater in the round and public. So hopefully soon we'll get some more um, guidance in terms of, of theater too.
Thank you.
Sure. And, and you know, I, I also want to point out that our health commissioner has been very flexible in working with us. She has guidance that she's getting from the Ohio Department of Health that she has to work through. And so um, I know she's been very, very busy. She is receptive to um, changing things when she gets new information and learning. That's what she did in this case. So she had to make the call on band music and choir. It's a tough call. She does not make the, uh, she does not make the call on athletics. That comes from the state, OHSAA, um, in the governor's office. So um, that's why there might be, there were, at one, there was at one point some inconsistencies.
Okay. Fantastic. Well, now it's time to transition to the next part of the agenda. I completely apologize for that. Um, so we'll pass it over to Mr. Miller for um, his uh, the reopening plans and recommendation.
So the, the recommendation is going to be to approve Plan A, which is K twelve, all-in, five days a week for the reopening for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year. I'm also going to mention a couple of other things that's not part of the recommendation, but part of the conversation. I can do that now. Including in my recommendation is a plan to have students in a four-day staggered start, beginning on Monday, August seventeenth. So that's a few days later, a couple of days later than our original intent, and I'll explain why. So it's going to be a staggered start or push-in for our kids, so we can learn a little bit about um, social distancing for both our staff and for our students. Students with last names that begin with letter A through L will attend school on that Monday, August seventeenth, and Wednesday. Students with last names M through Z will attend school on Tuesday, August eighteenth, and that Thursday. Friday will be a day with no students for the district to review and implement suggestions from our families, students, and staff from the surveys that are going to go out big week that week on Wednesday. The purpose of the survey is to ask about how our students are functioning in the buildings with social distancing in classrooms, cafeterias, hallways, et cetera. How it's one with masks all day, even though we're taking mask breaks, what's working and what isn't working. If you recall back on March thirteenth, we did a slow push-in too. And so we wanted, we want to test some, some of the systems out um, with social distancing and with masks and hoping to get feedback from the stakeholders about that. And we'll make the adjustments on that Friday and over the weekend with everybody back on Monday, August twenty-fourth. As we've said from the get-go, we want our students back. But we need to do it in the best possible way with feedback from the stakeholders and also the safety guidelines from the Department of Health, infectious disease expert from UC Health. Our, our survey responses will be collected. We'll make decisions on that day. Staff will still be in the building, still be working on Friday, August twenty-first. And then this hopefully gives us the best chance for long-term um, education for our kids, that I think um, people understand the value of that. Again, we want to be safe and we do that. So putting, pushing back um, our students start by just two days also assists us with some scheduling that we have with the virtual learning option, which many of our parents took advantage of. Our enrollment right now is um, three thousand, three hundred students in the virtual learning option. And so we have many parents that um, for different reasons are taking us up on that option. I'll say too, and I've said it before, um, that we know that we had some staff with some medical issues and very early on in this process, we reached out to them and I've done it and repeated it several times, if there were any concerns, to please contact HR. And we'll have them um, work for us in the virtual learning option environment as well. And so I think HR has done a pretty good job of matching that up um, for the needs of our kids.
Great. Do I have a motion to approve Mr. Miller's recommendation of Plan A, K to twelve, all-day, five days a week with a staggered start beginning August seventeenth and a full start beginning August twenty-fourth?
So moved. Linda.
Okay, Mrs. O'Connor, so moved?
I'll second.
Casper, second. Discussion? Can you speak, make sure you speak in your microphone? Thank you.
Think again, we've all seen so many emails and as you can tell just by the conversation tonight, we've been push and pulled in many directions and we've all read, you know, you can read one what article that says one thing, one study that says another, and at this point, the virus is so new, there isn't a lot of peer-reviewed data. They can give you a clear indication of where we are or what's legitimate. So um, I guess for me, before I vote, just to let people know where my head is. I feel like we've given our families that want an online option, that online option to the virtual learning option. And I'd like to see us have the in-person option as well for our families, because like people have said, I think that the virtual option works for some students and it doesn't for others. And I think that um, I'd like us to give that a try. Again, there's no right or wrong answer, as we discussed at the board, last board meeting for families. It works for some. It doesn't work for others. And I trust this team. I trust that the team has put together the very best plan that they can. Does that mitigate all risk? Absolutely not. Does it mitigate enough risk that I'm willing to put my child into that environment? Yes, it does. That's the choice that I would like to make. That's the choice I know that other families would like to make. And I feel like that's an option that I feel like we've done as much as we can, that I personally would like to support. And that's why I'll be doing what I'm doing tonight. Again, I don't think there's any right or wrong answer out there. But that's where I am and that's why I'll be moving forward how I am today. So I just wanted to explain where I am and why I'm making the choice I, I.
Thank you.
There's just no perfect answer. And I think I second Julie's, you know, we trust who we put in place. And we have all lost sleep, I know I can speak for me, I should speak for everybody, over what's the best thing to do. And there isn't a right or a wrong or a perfect. And I know that everyone wants to return to normal. We're not going to be there for a while, but we're hoping with this option to get a little normalcy.
Again, also for me, it, we don't know if this is short-term or long-term. I mean, we're all acting as if, you know, or we all hope that we're going to be normal in six months or, you know, but we don't know that. This could be something that's long-term. I mean, we don't know.
Sometimes it's out of our control. And I think that's important to remember too. It's not always in our control.
This is O'Connor. Mr. Parnell, we want to make sure that we give you space to make comments as well.
I'll, I'll speak to uh, to my thinking on it as well. Obviously, we're concerned about, or what I weigh, I should speak just for myself, the well-being and, and social and emotional well-being of our students. Academic progress, where we think they are uh, after already going through what they did in the spring with a quick shutdown. I look at all those factors. I look at the recommendations of the American Academy of Pediatrics and the CDC. I listen to our parents and to our students who has also communicated with us. And I believe our students need to return to as typical of an experience as we can safely provide. As Julie referenced, we provided alternatives for families that feel that remote learning because of high-risk health needs or whatever are a concern for them. And we've provided an opportunity for those eighty percent of our, of our students chose back in school. And I think we need to provide that to our families. I do want to be clear, there are families that have lost loved ones due to COVID. And certainly for those families, that grief is very real. And understanding that, still want to emphasize, I think what we're seeing in the studies is that children are not as susceptible. And other countries, other states have opened up their districts. I think we need to give this a chance. I know we've done everything we can to provide a safe experience for our students. I do want to ask for one more thing um, before we take a vote. Because many people were not able to access the meeting today. If we could make an effort to upload this as quickly as possible, so that uh, those who are not able to join in are able to see the meeting as well. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Parnell.
Uh, yeah, I would uh, just like to echo what, what Linda just stated. You know, we did, we have provided a uh, a virtual option. My kids, I have two kids in the district. They will both be back in, in class. I think Matt and his team have put together a sound plan. And uh, you know, when we get into this, after, you know, if we have to change again, we'll change. But uh, I think this is the right way to start and uh, that's why I'm going to vote to approve this. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks. So um, yeah, I, I just, there are so many things that were said just now that, that I uh, I, I just want to echo and just say that, you know, we uh, you know, we get a lot of emails. We got a lot of people telling us um, you know, their thoughts and feelings. And like I said, the last board meeting, everybody's story is personalized and individualized. And we celebrate every parent that has to make the hard decision. What we have to do is take a step out and we have to think about our seventeen thousand students, our two thousand employees, and our hundred thousand residents, right? And what is the best thing for us to do? We were recently, I was on a conversation with the health commissioner and um, you know, she was asked, you know, do you consider all these other factors when it relates to bringing back kids in school? And it was a very clear answer of, I look at the medical side of it, right? And so we understand that, right? Like, that's her job. But we also, as Board of Education Administration, look at the whole child, like Mrs. O'Connor was saying, the social, emotional, the services, all the things that we offer and having, having give that VLO option, we feel as if um, we've done a phenomenal job. Or our administration has a phenomenal job of preparing our schools to open. I also just want to say too, because I know um, each board member, we have um, our own ability to connect to the community. And I often uh, hear, you know, you, you're removed, right? People, people assume position, but they don't actually think of personal. And I just want to say, you know, like, we all have people that we know are deeply connected to the schools. I have a child that's going to be in first grade. I'm a former principal in the district that have peer relationships with people that are coming to the buildings to teach every day. My wife is a teacher in the district, so the decisions that are being made are super personal. They just are. And so when we make decisions like this, we think of everything, but these are hard decisions, right? Because you know people, we know people, we know our community. And so um, we appreciate our community stepping out and commenting. We appreciate our community letting us know how they feel because we take all that. We, and we look at the data. You know, Matt has said over and over and over again, you know, like he meets multiple times a week with health commissioner. The infectious disease experts at UC Health. This isn't political, this isn't whatever it may be. This is looking at all the information that we have with something that is so new and in its infancy, this disease, to make the best decision that we possibly can on what we believe is best for our community. God bless local control, right? Because that's where we're at right now and it gives us the ability to have this conversation and to say, hey, for our community, with the information we have, we believe this is what's best. So um, I just want to just quick shout out, and I know the other board members, I, I would assume agree, but thank you to Matt, thank you to Jenny, thank you to your teams. It's tireless work. You um, are not always loved by everybody. I know that. And you guys are working an insane number of hours right now, preparing our schools and preparing our staff and our students. But you're doing it with the, the child, child focus, right? Student-centered focus. And so I'm appreciative of that.
Thank you. I just, also, um, the team has been like, you know, working, as everybody knows, behind the scenes and staff. And we've been on Zooms with staff, uh, we've attended Zooms with staff this summer. The other thing I want to say is it's likely that we're going to revisit this issue again, if things hopefully get better than, um, you know, that, that's obviously what everybody wants. But if cases go up or if the governor does another pull-out, we're going to have to have a conversation again. So this is something that's a state of flux and while we've made a decision today of how we're going to start, does not mean we're not going to change a month or three months or at Christmas time or winter time for us. So um, we are continuing to make sure that um, we're providing um, safe space for our kids, for our staff as much as we can, uh, as we try to get through this.
And I want to comment too, I know that um, one of the questions, um, it was from Emily who said, you know, what makes us different? And I think we've all talked about, everyone has to decide, this is local, a local decision. But I will say that I believe that I work with the most talented staff, administrators, I mean, we are blessed in this district to be able to come together and, believe me, we've worked, we continue to work on this, we will continue to work on it. It is our job, but we are doing it with the students, the staff, the safety and all that. But the, the educational experience, we still want people to have that educational experience they expect to get from Lakota. But I'm just proud to work with the group that I work with. I, I just want to say thanks for everybody's time and effort, because we're not finished. It's going to continue. So, thanks.
We want to mention, Brad, that we have been to a couple of schools over the last couple of days at all levels, E S E and art administrators and our teachers, they are all in to try to figure out the social distancing. They've got post-its on the floor, they've got tables separated, they've got yardsticks out. So everybody is concerned about the safety of our students and our staff.
I even appreciate that you pivoted to say, okay, we do need, we're going to have staff here and it will be helpful to have two extra days. And we're recognizing that. We listen to our staff. We heard their concerns. And we're adjusting based on that. So that you're listening to the needs of your staff and what they're telling you is going to be in the best interest of the kids and the staff to make the best start possible.
And that's a great point too. And that's one of the reasons why we're taking that first Friday off, is to recalibrate, say, what's worked, what hasn't worked, where do we need to do better at? Before we bring everybody back together, so. That's, that was, that came, that part came from Mr. Kelly in terms of making sure we reset. So that goes back to the power of the, of the D and administration.
Yeah, and just to echo Kelly, we, I mean, our intention would have been to have the entire board be able to get out to the buildings. But obviously, being July and summer, um, we just wanted to try to get out there and just say, you know, you see things on paper and you want to see how it's, and, and you know, we had great conversations with teachers that are in their rooms getting set up and it doesn't look normal, right? And I, and I think that's a thing we have to recognize too, if we do um, vote to uh, move forward with Plan A, is that it's going to look different, it's going to feel different, it's not going to be quote-unquote "normal." But you know, that's okay, because I, because I think it's a step forward, so. Um, if there's no further comment, we'll go ahead and call.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes. Okay, um, that ends this meeting. Um, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Parnell?
Yes.
Mr. Level?
Yes. Thank you to our community for attending this meeting. It will be released ASAP to get out to you for those that weren't able to connect. So please help us share that on social media as well. So thank you.
Thanks, everyone.